We will reconvene the special meeting, excuse me, of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, September 24th, 2019. Do you have anything to report, Mr. City Attorney?
No final action, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we will adjourn the special meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, September 24th. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
And Howell.
Here. And if you will all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any agenda update?
No update tonight.
Okay. And we will start with business from the floor, and that is our item where if anybody would like to speak to the council about anything that is not on the agenda, I don't currently have any cards. I don't see anyone running forward or grabbing a blue slip. So we will move on to scheduled presentation. Oh, do we have somebody that wants to speak to something that's not on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, come on down.
Welcome to your floor.
And you, I need you to come up and speak in front of the microphone, and you will have three minutes.
Okay. My name's Laura Atkinson, and I expected a bigger turnout for this issue, but I just want to know, what are we going to do about the traffic situation, the crashes, the lawlessness, the just deadliness of our streets? That's my question.
The problem, perhaps I should have explained a little bit more clearly. We can't actually take any action on any item that you might bring up. We will be happy to have, either you can contact me directly, or we can have staff contact you to discuss the item, but it's not on the agenda, so we can't actually take any official action.
Okay, well, just to put it on the record, that there are a lot of us that are very concerned about this and just don't see anything changing.
If you have specific questions about enforcement, for example, not to put him on spot, but to put him on the spot, our police chief is along the back window there, and I'm sure he would be happy to talk with you personally if you want to chat right now.
Okay.
Yes, but duly noted, thank you.
Thank you.
And seeing nobody else coming forward, now we, oh, Matt Farron.
So even though it's on the agenda again, there's been a lot of outcry in regards to potential low-income housing on the state property for Folsom Prison or adjacent to it. That is something that a lot of residents here in Folsom want to have clarification with, especially with all of the low-income housing that has already gone up here in Folsom, because we've done more than our fair share, as well as all of the apartment buildings that have gone up, and the mega apartment buildings that have gone up here in the Folsom area. This is not the Folsom that we moved into years ago, and this is not the Folsom that we expect. And I will say that, speaking for many people here in Folsom, we expect our city leaders to sit there and continue what we sat there and bought into here in Folsom.
Matt, you can feel free to contact me again. I know you and I have had a little bit of an exchange online. My phone number is on the city's website. My email, direct email, is on the city's website. Feel free to call me. There's, as I said in some of the posts online.
I think that a lot of this could have been conducted.
We don't know anything more.
On that website, if you would have answered 100%, but you.
Well, I'm sorry that you, I was pretty direct, and there was a lot of other people that think I was pretty direct, so I'm sorry that we'll have to agree to disagree, but I'm happy to talk to you about it offline.
Nope.
Okay, anybody else business from the floor? Okay, third try. We will move on to scheduled presentation, and Councilmember Gaylord is going to be presenting proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming October 2019 as Arts and Humanities Month.
I don't have her permission.
You can just ask her to meet you up front.
All right, wait, this is Shasha. Shasha, there you go.
Yeah, did an extra eight.
All right, so we are, this is the proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming October 2019 as Arts and Humanities, as Arts and Humanities Month. Whereas the city council recognizes that arts and culture activities benefit the residents and visitors of Folsom and are a significant contributor to Folsom's quality of life, and whereas the nation's 95,000 nonprofit arts organizations, the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for the Humanities, have regularly issued official proclamations on an annual basis designated October as National Arts and Humanities Month, and whereas, for more than two decades, the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations and communities and across, I'm sorry, and states across the country, including the White House and Congress. And whereas, the Arts and Cultural Commission works with the community to increase public awareness of understanding and participation in humanities and the arts. And whereas, Folsom has a diverse and vibrant art scene with local organizations providing opportunities to the public to celebrate and participate in Arts and Humanities Month in a very, sorry, in a very, in a variety of ways, including the following events. Gallery at 48 Natoma Art Exhibition, Pushing the Boundaries, and the 13th Annual Folsom Focus Photography Competition. Folsom History Museum presents the History of Sacramento County Cemetery's Exhibit. Bank of America Gallery Exhibit of the 19th Annual Folsom Lake College Visual Exhibit. Bank of America Gallery Exhibit of the 19th Annual Folsom Lake College Visual Arts Faculty. The Russian Ballet Theater Performance of Swan Lake at the Harris Center. Sutter Street Theater presents Evil Dead: The Musical. Folsom Glenn, I'm sorry, Folsom Glow Event by Folsom Parks and Recreation. Folsom Concert Association presents Nat Brown Groove with Smooth. Fiesta Dinner and Song at the Mirror House Foundation. Folsom Glass Pumpkin Patch at 48 Natoma Arts Center. And Folsom Lake Symphony presents High Impact with Chris Bubrick. Therefore, now therefore, I, Roger Gaylord, on behalf of Kerry Howell, Mayor of the city of Folsom, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Arts and Humanities Month in the city of Folsom, and invite our residents to recognize the contributions of the arts to the community. I encourage all members of the community to attend the special cultural activities proclaimed this 24th day of September, 2019. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Folsom City, for giving me this recognition. It really means a lot. I just want to, I'm raising awareness about pediatric cancer all across the city, and last week, we had a 5K cancer walk where city council member Mike Kozlowski, he was there, and he graced that event, and Roger Gaylord has been supporting me. Mayor Kerry has been supporting me a lot, so I've got a lot of support. Before I end, I do want to recognize Dr. Anjali Bhawar from UC Davis Children's Health. She is pediatric oncologist and has been supporting me in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we will move to the consent calendar. Did anybody want to pull anything from consent? We have no requests.
Yeah, I wanted to pull A and C.
Do we have a motion for B, D, and E?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll on B, D, and E.
Councilmember Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
Okay, you're up on A.
So I actually just wanted some clarification on this one, if you would, because I voted no on the original agenda item with the consent, or the vote we had last council meeting. So with this, is that, this is basically authorized, and maybe you can just elaborate a little bit further on it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gaylord, Madam Mayor, and the member of the city council, Stephen Wong, City Attorney. What this is, is not particular rate specific. It is a general procedure protocol for all rate utility and order rate increases under Prop 218. So the city council, by this resolution, would set the protocol and procedure to make sure that people know how to file a protest if they want to, where to submit the protest, how the protests will be counted, the time and the date and the timeframe for submitting the protest. It just happens that this follows the item that you and the council reviewed last council meeting, at the last council meeting. So it's very standard, straightforward. It complies with the law. It tracks both the Prop 218 and also the state law, elaborating the requirements of citizen having a voice in saying yes or no to a potential increase or some kind of new rate that the government agency is entertaining to adopt.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted clarification prior, because it's pretty standardized as far as in Prop 218, how and when we do this.
Correct.
The last action we took was to enact, to start the process. This is just confirming the process?
This is not just to confirm the process, but also to let folks know, and this will be more, this will be explained in a lot more detail in the notices that will go out to the residents and the property owners and the ratepayers as to how to exactly protest a rate increase if they want to. Prop 218 is a taxpayers' initiative, so it was not written with enough specificity to show exactly how to make this kind of protest. So this resolution will do just that, and there will be no ambiguity. It will allow the council and also the city clerk to be able to identify how and count the protest submittals, to see if there's any opposition to the proposed rate increase.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Gaylord, I did want to add that we're actually going one step further with our mailer for the proposed rate increases. We're not only describing this process for putting forth a majority protest, but we're actually even providing a form that people could just fill out that meets all of these Prop 218 requirements. So we're making it easy to do so if you wish to file the protest, whether from what you got in the mail, or also downloading it from our website.
And thank you for that. And one of my concerns that I mentioned last, and I'll end with this, was just, I'd like it to be labeled in detail that this is of a proposed rate increase, and I think that's going to be part of the, part of the title, right?
It will be, and also on the protest form itself, that city manager explained, it does in bold font, "This is a protest."
Okay.
To the proposed rate increase, and then they will have a choice to check the box or boxes which one of the three rates, or maybe all of them, they would like to protest against.
Thank you.
You bet.
So I'll move 10339.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes.
Can I read it?
You also pulled 7C.
Yeah, I did. So I just had a question on this, so let me just go to it real quick, and Dave, it might be towards you.
Mm-hmm.
So last we spoke, when we discussed with the utility, or, I can't remember which council meeting it was, but we discussed the fully electric trucks, side-loading trucks?
Yes.
And you had mentioned that there were some infrastructure issues as to why we haven't looked at those?
Well, that's one of the issues we have, and the main issue is there, there's such a new technology, they're not being mass-produced, they're kind of on the cutting edge of that, for that use. Sacramento County has one. We've been in contact with them to get a demo of that vehicle, and whether or not it would meet our requirements, we're very skeptical that it would meet our needs here in Folsom, just given our terrain and our distance from our landfill. In situations like Sacramento County and Sacramento City where they have transfer stations, those are much more easily put into use because the trips are much shorter.
So what, if one of the, so we had a demo of, so Folsom-Cordova Unified School District just deployed, or is in the process of deploying, three fully-electric Lion buses.
Right.
They were at the per capita meeting, and we had that company there with the bus, as well as a delivery truck. And from everything that we heard, and now this could just be, you know, a company marketing their product, which I'm fully aware of, but just in researching this since that meeting, I feel like this is something that we should look into.
And we are. We are looking into it. We're just not optimistic about what's currently available in the marketplace right now. For example, Sacramento County has over 100 side loaders in their fleet. We have less than 25. They have one electric vehicle, and it's currently down for service. So, you know, it is a great technology, and it will come, you know, in the future, but currently for us and our needs, it's probably just not a good fit. There's probably other methods and other vehicles we could look at in the interim until that point.
So is there any way, because what I want to do is look at those and vet those prior to buying new, new diesel trucks that get three miles for the gallon, you know what I mean?
Understood.
So I feel like we're kicking the can down the road, and then we're going to the public with a, an ask for a rate increase, when we could be looking at newer innovative ways such as this, and seeing the technology. And I wanted to play a link of what we saw as far as from this company, but it's a non-hydraulic, fully, fully functioning, side-loading refuge truck, I guess they're called.
Right.
The other part of that is the HVIP, or, sorry, yeah, HVIP subsidies that we get back from it. It actually makes the pricing like right on point with the diesel trucks we're buying, but then you have the maintenance and the gas, as you're aware. But I feel like the charging component, too, there's literally no infrastructure prior to a 220, like three-cycle charging receptacle.
Right.
So it seems to me like the technology is there, but we're not, we're just not, we haven't been introduced to it yet, or we haven't seeked it out. I'd like to, if there's any way to motion, push this off just a little bit, you know, pending my colleagues' input on it, but just to see if that, if this is something we can at least change one to, to vet the technology and look into it, something like that, you know?
Well, the issue with pushing it off is there's a year lead time on these vehicles, and we've already pushed off enough, and that's kind of why we're in the predicament we are with our current capital fund for replacement vehicles. We will be able to introduce one into our fleet to at least begin demoing them, but the lifecycle of these vehicles is such that, you know, we're not going to go out and replace our whole fleet at once, and we'll be back in front of your council in, in the coming months, asking for more replacement vehicles. So we will have the opportunity to introduce these into our fleet. That's not the issue. We also are, you know, currently in the process of putting out an RFQ for consultant services to come in and look at our fleet, to exactly look at what you're, you're speaking of, whether it's electrifier, or CNG, or some other alternative fuels for our current fleet, and how do we get there in the short term to start, you know, phasing out our current diesel? These vehicles are capable, to my understanding, they're capable of being converted to CNG, so we wouldn't lose that component. It would be an additional add-on to the cost of vehicles, but they are capable of being retrofitted for CNG, so in the next, you know, the lifecycle of these is eight to 10 years, so we would have that opportunity.
So, and I guess on the specific one I was looking at, I guess it's a six-month lead time, no hydraulics, and it's about a 230-mile range. Would that, the range-wise, what's our?
The range-wise, you know, that's like anything else with, with range that they spec. It's probably flat land. We have a lot of hills. We have a long, long haul to our landfill, fully loaded versus unloaded. We'd have to really dig into that range, and that's why we're very interested in meeting with Sacramento County on, on their experience with their electric vehicle, to see, you know, what, what is its capabilities and how did it perform?
Have you met with the gentleman with?
We have not yet. We've been trying to schedule with Mr. Leach and others at Sacramento County to go out and look at it.
I was going to say Folsom-Cordova, FCUSD on the buses. I know they're two different.
Buses are, buses are a little different.
Two different types of trucks, but the technology is.
Sure.
Near the same.
Yeah, they're the same manufacturers.
Correct. So I don't know if you've checked in. My goal is, is to see if we can maybe add one of these as one of the replacements to actually vet it and get that pushed through, so we can actually maximize our, with this per capita increase coming as well from Sac, you know, the air quality control board, we can introduce them in the stuff that we're doing and utilize them as.
And we're, we're taking those steps now, but I don't think we should really delay the, the majority of our purchases just for one vehicle. And we are looking into that, and we can definitely come back to you, especially since we have plenty of vehicles we could replace right now. And these are, these are critical components to our operations that we need to get on order, so that in a year, we can replace them.
Yeah, we, we've been in, at this point, near daily contact with our colleagues at the Air District in terms of, you know, what might be possibilities to secure a low-cost electric or low emissions vehicle. So it's not like this action precludes progress in that direction, that that will still happen.
And they're actually holding an open house in McCullin that we're already planning on attending in October to look at all these vehicles.
I'd like to join in with that.
Okay.
The last question I had, so what, and just to, so I understand, when we talked to you, you said we didn't have the infrastructure. What infrastructure are you talking about? Is that?
Well, it comes with the cycle time. And, and the cycle time is how long does it take to charge these vehicles? If, if our cycle time needs to be quicker, we would need a fast charging, kind of like Tesla has the 20-minute charge, and other vehicles have the DC charging capabilities. That's the infrastructure that I was referring to. If we need to go that route for fast charging, that's very expensive.
Trucks have that built into the truck, apparently. So, and Tesla's like 50 minutes. It's 20 for the first 75%, and then 40 for the additional.
And that may be what we need, given our operations, given our trips to the landfill.
Okay.
Dave, did you say that the vehicle that the city of Sacramento is testing is down for repairs right now?
It is. We spoke with them today, and it's, it's in the shop for something.
It's older technology, and Chicago had the same issue when they deployed theirs. It's just the older versions of this technology. To your point, it wasn't there. I think it is there now.
And it's getting there every day.
Yeah.
Right.
So, may I ask a question? The, you're going to have a consultant look at the fleet, or?
We'd like, we'd like to get some experts in. We're certainly not experts in the evolving technologies of electric vehicles and these. And we want to see what's coming in the market and get somebody to assist us in doing that.
Is part of that, should part of that discussion be analyzing route planning for limited-range vehicles? Because ultimately, the school buses work okay for certain routes for FCUSD.
Certainly.
But they wouldn't work very well for, say, you know, Black Hawk, Black, you know, Black Mind School District up in the foothills for the exact reasons you said.
Right.
So if you can bundle those two things together, because we do have flatter parts of Folsom.
And certainly in the, as a plan area begins to build out, I mean, that's obviously one we're looking at for those, that type of use. It's relatively flat in the areas down there, that it's close to the landfill, you know, it makes sense to.
Well, it's closer to the landfill.
Closer to the landfill.
But I think the other, the other reason why I think that's a good idea is, you know, we can sort of kind of see the light at the end of the current courtyard location, and so I think that this information is timely in the design of the facilities that we would in fact invest in, in a new courtyard location. But I personally am not going to be supportive of spending a whole bunch of infrastructure money at the current site, because we know we're moving.
Well, that's the thing, is that you're not actually spending a lot on the infra, sorry, if you want.
No, it's fine, Councilmember Gaylord. I was just going to say that we, that is part of what Mr. Dujin and I discussed in terms of retaining this consultant is looking at, you know, what if, say, the courtyard is, you know, five years out, seven years out, 10 years out, running different scenarios as to whether the ROI makes sense for us in terms of the infrastructure for these types of vehicles, and planning very proactively for turning over the fleet to as many low-emissions vehicles as we can. So just putting a real thoughtful process to it from, with, with expert help.
And I appreciate that. I guess I just have a problem with a million-dollar ask when there's, there's newer technology we can look at and utilize exist, or leveraging partnerships outside of the district that are going to be charging our resident ratepayers anyways for air quality control, when we can step up and pull some of that back, you know what I mean? So I'd just like to see that incorporated in this versus just buying the same old thing again.
I understand that, and I think it's, you know, we've been working on this, this ask, you know, since July.
Well, at this point, it's not an ask, Dave. It's already in the budget.
Right, it's, it's in the budget, but I will assure you, we are looking into that technology, and we are, you know, as we can, slip those vehicles in. Again, you know, Sacramento County is an example, 100 vehicles of side loaders, they have one. And, and, you know, they're on the, they're on that front edge.
And it's in the shop.
Well, it's in the shop, but I don't, I don't know exactly why it's in the shop, but we wanted to go look at it, and it's not available, because we want to see it in operations. You know, we do have the ability to slip these in as we can. We're certainly not, and I don't think the industry is there to support replacing a mass amount of these vehicles. And, you know, given that we're a much smaller player in that market, you know, we're going to be in line. And, and that's why we want to do our due diligence and look into, you know, will it fit our needs versus getting it just for the sake of getting it and not really being able to utilize it to its best ability.
And I think the other thing that we need to keep in mind is that although the technology has been transformed, for the most part, for buses and school buses, garbage trucks are basically construction equipment, and I have yet to go to a construction site and find an electric grade-all or construction equipment, because there's so many moving parts on these things. And I appreciate the fact that we're looking at this down the road, but I don't think we're there yet, and I don't want to be the test case for, you know, a $400,000 piece of equipment that, that, you know, we can't use three weeks from now. Anyway, do we have any other comments or questions? Anybody want to move the item? I will move Resolution 10341.
I will second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
No.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. And with that, we will move to public hearing, item 8A, Resolution 1294, ordinance of the city of Folsom amending number 249 of the commercial use table in section 17.22.030E of the Folsom Municipal Code pertaining to veterinary facilities in the Business Professional zoning district introduction and first reading.
Good evening, Mayor Howell and councilmembers. Stephanie Henry, Community Development Department. So the item before you this evening is fairly straightforward and is a minor amendment to Title 17 of the city's Folsom Municipal Code. Specifically, the proposed ordinance modifies the commercial land use table in order to provide opportunities for veterinary facilities to be located within the business professional zone upon approval of a conditional use permit. This proposal is before you as a result of an application submitted by Dr. Richard Turner. Dr. Richard Turner is a veterinarian who owns two veterinary clinics. He operates one veterinary clinic in the city of Lodi, and he also has a veterinary facility, an emergency after-hours clinic in the city of Stockton. He is interested in bringing one of these emergency after-hours clinics to the region, and he has identified a specific location within the city of Folsom for this operation. This location has a zoning designation of Business Professional, BP, and under our current zoning regulations, a veterinary facility is not permitted. As far as commercial uses that do allow veterinary facilities, the C2 and C3, which are the central business and general commercial districts, permit veterinary facilities by right. And then the C1, which is the neighborhood commercial, allows veterinary facilities when they are under 2,500 square feet or have no outdoor areas. In considering the applicant's request, staff reached out to our consultant team that's currently working on our zoning code update to get a sense of how other cities are regulating these types of uses in business professional zones. According to the consultant team, many cities do permit veterinary facilities in business professional zones, however, they typically require a conditional use permit. City staff also wanted to see how jurisdictions, both cities and counties, regulate these facilities in the area. So we did a survey and surveyed 10 cities and counties in the region. The results of that survey revealed that 60% of those jurisdictions do allow veterinary facilities in business professional zones, and the majority of those do require a conditional use permit. Staff also considered the compatibility of this type of use in a business professional zone with other types of uses that you typically see in the business professional zone. And as a result, looking at medical facilities, which are permitted, staff determined that many of the characteristics, both the physical characteristics and operational. many of the characteristics, both the physical characteristics and operational characteristics, are very similar to veterinary facilities, with the exception of, you know, some veterinary facilities offer extra services such as kenneling and boarding, or they also have maybe outdoor areas that allow for like a dog run. So in terms of types of impacts that might be examined when locating one of these facilities in a business professional zone, staff determined that you have a number of typical impacts you might have as far as traffic, parking, noise. You also may have some waste or odor impacts associated with this facility, depending on how it is operating. And as a result of this analysis, it was determined that the proposed amendment should require a use permit in order to be able to evaluate individual facilities on an individual basis in terms of how, you know, what their proposed operation is and where they are specifically located. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 4th to consider the proposed amendment. At that hearing, the applicant described the benefits and the compatibilities of veterinary facilities with office uses, especially with medical office uses. In addition, there were several local veterinarians who spoke in favor of the proposed code amendment. There was no one from the public that spoke at the hearing against the amendment. City staff did receive one letter prior to the hearing opposing the amendment and sharing concerns about noise, odor, waste. So after some deliberation, the Planning Commission did recommend city council approval of the proposed amendment with a six-to-one vote. The commissioner who did not recommend approval had concerns over the optics associated with veterinary clinics and specifically animals being located in a business park. But it is notable that the same applicant applied at that hearing date for a conditional use permit to locate his emergency, his proposed emergency clinic in a specific business professional location. And that proposal was approved by the commission with a seven-to-zero unanimous vote, which is contingent upon city council approving this code change. So with that, that's the conclusion of my presentation, and the recommendation is for city council's approval of ordinance 1294.
If I may. Any questions of staff?
Sorry. Thank you. With regards to the conditional use, so any, any business that came, and if we were to make this change, they would still be, have to submit the conditional use permit for what you're requesting to have approval regardless, right?
Right. So if the business was proposing to be located in the business professional zone, then they would be required to obtain a use permit, conditional use permit.
And the second question to that, and maybe Steve can answer this, but that, what would that entail for the historic district? Is there a separate requirement for that main strip right there?
It's the same requirement.
Same requirement?
Yes, sir.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
I do. So is medical always, is that just fall under business professional, or is there a separate zoning designation for medical offices?
Medical office falls under business professional.
It always does. Okay. And so with this particular business, it would be a nighttime-only veterinary clinic, right? When the, when the offices in that business park are open, he's closed and vice versa.
So for the particular conditional use permit?
Yeah.
That was considered on the 4th? That's correct.
And if he, down the road, wanted to become a 24-hour veterinarian or wanted to assume normal, you know, nine to five hours, would he have to go back and ask for a new conditional use permit?
With that specific application, yes. There's a condition that the hours cannot modify unless they come back to the Planning Commission for a modification.
Okay. And is there any criteria upon which the, a future Planning Commission would, would consider a future conditional use permit application? Or is it, it's totally subjective and it's, it's up to whoever's in the Planning Commission at the time?
I didn't follow that question. Sorry.
What's the criteria by which the Planning Commission is approving or denying a conditional use permit?
So they'll take a look at the specific request, and then typically, staff will come up with a set of conditions that makes sense to go with that use permit. The commission may add condition, additional conditions or revise the conditions, but there's a standard set of conditions that go with that property, that project for the life of it.
If I may, Madam Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor, the standard for funding for the Planning Commission and also the Historic District Commission for use permit is the same. It's identified, specified in the municipal code. So the funding in order to issue and authorize the use permit has to be that the establishment, the proposed operation, maintenance of the use, or the building will or will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, and the general welfare of persons residing or walking in the neighborhood of such proposed use, or be detrimental or injurious to property and improvements in the neighborhood or to the general welfare of the city. So it doesn't matter who the commissioners are at any given time, it's the same standard that they have to be able to find.
But detrimental is in the eye of the beholder, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I guess what I'm, I'm thinking about, I mean, maybe in this particular case, you know, I don't have an issue because the, the hours are offset and all that kind of stuff. But, but I'm just thinking down the road, you know, how far this envelope can be pushed? Because what if somebody came and said, well, I want to have a veterinary clinic and a business professional, but I do want to have an outdoor space? Am I comfortable with that? I don't know. So maybe I would want to, to put a condition on this that, yes, it could be business professional, but it can't have an outdoor space or something like that. That is something we could do. Okay.
And then to add to that, if I may, I have an issue with, I think that, I think this is needed and I agree with it, but in a historic district setting where it's retail-based, that's, I'd have an issue with that as well. So I don't know if that's.
Right. So I think that's why we would recommend definitely having the conditional use process so the commission can look at it and determine whether or not this is a suitable business practice for that specific site.
Okay.
Or location.
And Councilmember Gaylord, I'll just clarify for you also that Sutter Street, I think what you're talking about doesn't have the BP underlying zone. So the allowed uses, as your, our city attorney identified on Sutter Street, refer to the underlying zoning, but the underlying zoning there is commercial. It's not business professional, so.
Actually.
I thought it was.
They do have a few parcels.
A few business professional. I stand corrected.
Sorry.
But the standards will be applied, the same standards will be, will be applied.
But a finding can't be made just based off, it doesn't fit the retail environment, right? A finding has to be specific to the five elements.
Correctly in the code.
So that's what my, my problem is, is that if they can't find a finding to, to deny that specific business for those areas on, in the historic district, that might be an issue.
I just want to clarify for anybody that's watching this now or listening, we are not talking about anything in the historic district right now. You're talking about, you know, something.
Talking about anything that is designated zone that could be in the historic district. So it's irrelevant.
If I can. But we're not talking about a project that's in the historic district. So that's on.
Can I rephrase the esoteric question that's on the table here? Is there a standard of reasonableness for issuing conditional use permits? Can the Planning Commission just blanketly say no, that they believe that there will be detrimental effects? Or do they have to have achieved that decision by some reasonable effort to grant it?
And Councilmember Kozlowski, that's a very, very good question. Madam Mayor, if I may, it's not just, just whether someone believes it's reasonable or not reasonable to apply the standard, it is whether there's any substantial evidence to show that there is a detrimental effect or could be a detrimental effect if this business would be allowed. So we'll have to see what kind of evidence is there. Has there been any previous police complaints in similar situations, similar establishments, similar operating hours, noise, odor, or not? So those are the evidence that folks will have to evaluate, and I hope they do get brought up before the commission so the commissioners can hear and evaluate as well. It's not just some allegation that I believe this is not going to have a detrimental, detrimental effect, or I believe this is going to have a detrimental effect. We need to see what evidence there is or they are to back up those allegations or the assertions.
So that, that would suggest that there isn't full discretion to deny a conditional use permit?
There is discretion, yes, but the action cannot be arbitrary or capricious. So they have to be based upon reason.
That'd be a really big burden of proof and a precedent.
And I think maybe one of the other issues that we have here tonight is, I don't know that, that all of the people that are sitting up here tonight have been through previous conditional use permits. That, that, and to be honest, in this instance, I know the action that we're taking is to amend the municipal code to allow it, but it probably would have been helpful if we could see a copy of the use permit. That might have, you know, made some of these questions go away. So that, you know, like Sarah's question about what are the operating hours going to be, all of that is fairly standard, but it would have been helpful if that information, the detailed information that came along with the recommendation from the Planning Commission had been included in the packet so that would be, so we'd have some idea of what that permit looks like. But again, the action tonight is just to amend the municipal code.
And that's my question. My, my issue isn't with what's tonight or they ask, because I'm for it. My question is setting precedent going forward. And so that's my issue, is understanding that this sets precedent and changes the rules, if you will, and it's harder for the, or the Planning Commission to deny a conditional use permit if it was to be somewhere where it ought not to be. So, you know, based around retail-type environment, so historic district.
Except this isn't really setting precedent because we changed the municipal code as time changed. This has probably happened in the time I've been here, I don't know, probably 40 times at least.
Yeah, but it doesn't come back up to us for these CUPs. They stay at the planning level. So we don't control that.
If I could maybe be helpful here, Madam Mayor, if the council wished to limit the left and right limitation of what this particular use permit may look like for this particular use, that office, you may do so tonight because that's within your purview. You can allow, or not allow, but if you wish to allow with a conditional use permit in BP zone, you can also specify for this particular use in BP zone, these are the limitations if you want to establish them tonight.
Well, but I think it's very specific to this type of business, and I don't want to attempt to write that permit on the fly. But just to answer your question, you know, we make changes to adjust municipal code regulations pretty frequently. And with regard to anything in the historic district, almost every single use down there requires a conditional use permit. You know, a new restaurant, everything, almost everything down there operates under a base permit. So every single thing, almost every single thing goes through historic district and then has the ability to be appealed to the city council. So if your concern was making, opening some floodgate in the historic district, that, this does not do that.
Right. And we, remember, we have a list with the zoning code update of all of the, the changes. And we were doing, and we are in the process with our consultant team of doing a robust look at our use regulations. And we're finding that we have a lot of areas where we're silent and, and there's uses that have just evolved over the last 25 years that we don't address frankly, or that we are more restrictive. And other jurisdictions have found a way to say, well, we do want to consider this type of use with a conditional use permit so we can evaluate. And to Councilmember Aquino's point, sometimes they do that with specific parameters, whether it's outdoor uses, the size of an operation, it can only be considered within, you know, if it has a certain distance from a sensitive, you know, use like residential, things like that. So, so we looked at that, and there were not a lot of those types of restrictions on this use in those other jurisdictions. Otherwise, we would have recommended that. In the particular use permit that went parallel to this, they do not have outdoor uses, but that's something that could have come up during a hearing with the commission and been conditioned on a project or, you know, or something like that. But if you know that you think that would be an issue, you would not want to see with this type of use, then it certainly is within your right to say you'd like to add that type of restriction to any, you know, veterinary use within a BP zone moving forward. You can do that tonight. What we can't do is change the conditions that applied to the, the use permit, and we feel like those issues were all addressed and vetted, you know, effectively with, with the Planning Commission.
And we went through a very similar process. Pam, you weren't back yet, I don't think, but this is pretty much the same thing that happened when the Folsom Dog Resort moved down onto Blue Ravine. We had, I don't know, two or three hearings about that, about what that outdoor space was going to look like and barking and, you know, because we have a, we had a, a dog training facility and boarding facility next to an engineering office. So. Anyway, any other questions of staff? Because I do have requests to speak.
What were the conditions that were applied to this particular project?
The conditions were no outdoor area.
Okay.
That the hours could not vary from the proposed hours, that they had to.
Which is off-hours from the business folks in the building.
Understood.
And then there was conditions related to sanitation and odors.
There weren't more generalized ones in terms of?
Well, there is also a condition, just so everyone knows, there's also a condition that states if they go outside the boundaries of the use permit or if they are causing some type of nuisance, that we can take them back to the Planning Commission and have the use permit revoked.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, I have a few requests to speak, and you'll have three minutes. And I'm going to suggest that if you agree with the previous speaker or you're all in agreement to either attend the ribbon cutting or that you hate the project, let us know. And the first speaker, and I apologize for not being able to read your last name, but it's John M. from Cameron Park? That's okay. Come on down, John. Then Bob Cool after that, then Richard Smith. Thank you. Welcome.
So hi, my name is John Wu. I own Airport Pet Clinic over in Cameron Park. And I just want to say that we, our closest vet ER is 30 minutes away, and that's with good traffic. So the clients in the area, you know, 30 minutes can mean you're, you have a dead, you have, you know, you have a dead pet. This new ER is going to be 15 minutes away. So we definitely do need it in that area. We have no clinics nearby that offer after-hours care. I also own a hospital in Stockton, and Dr. Turner's a friend of mine, you know, full caveat, he opened up his ER about three years ago or so. Same situation, next to Costco, next to Kaiser. There have been no issues with the police, no issues with odor, smell, barking, none of that stuff.
Interesting combo. Costco, Kaiser, and the veterinary hospital.
Yep.
One-stop shopping.
So, so he's proven success, and I hope you approve this permit because we definitely do need it for my patients up here.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bob Cool. Then Richard Smith. And then Dr. Turner.
Good evening. My name's Bob Cool. I'm a commercial real estate broker here in town for the last 100 years, it feels like.
Oh, that's right. I've seen your name like everywhere.
Yeah, that's overhead. Richard was looking at a building that was previously a oral surgery space, and he can come in and take it without very much improvements. So I was asked by the owner of the building, Diane Hansen, to tell you that she fully supports this. Unfortunately, she's sick tonight, so she couldn't come down here. So that's what I wanted to do.
Thank you. Dr. Turner. Then Sarah Garlandhouse.
Richard Smith.
Oh, sorry. I was.
It's okay.
Sending cards to the clerk too quickly.
All right. I'm Richard Smith. I'm a veterinarian. I graduated about 43 years ago, so I've been practicing in California for 43 years. For the last 26 years, I've been an emergency veterinarian in California and Oregon. I also have worked for Richard Turner. And I can say, of all the emergency clinics, there is, was no odor in his clinic. It's very clean, top-notch equipment, and no barking. Remember, our patients are very ill and traumatized, so there's rarely any barking. Most of them are on pain meds, so there isn't. Most of them are on pain meds, so there isn't any yapping or meowing or anything like that. And they're also confined to the building itself. We have a real need, like Dr. Liu indicated, I worked for Motherlode Pet Emergency Clinic for five years. They shut down, so there's nothing between here and the state line as far as veterinary emergency clinics go. Lot of doctors have critical patients, they close at 6:00 or 7:00. They transfer them to the emergency clinic for overnight care and monitoring. So we have a need for that as well. Plus, we're going to be the only, well, not me, but all creatures will be the only clinic that will see exotic pets, exotic mammals, birds, pocket pets. UC Davis sees them, but they won't see them after 9:00 P.M. So we are going to be the only ones to see exotic pets.
I'll take that as a yours in support of the...
I am in support. Yeah, I am. So, let's see, anything else? Oh, also, I've seen what other hospitals charge, emergency clinics charge from receipts, and when I worked in Stockton, at least, their fees were very reasonable and affordable. So the nearest emergency clinic is in Sacramento on Bradshaw, so...
Actually, that's Rancho Cordova.
Right, oh, that is, yes.
Yep.
Because I work in Rancho.
Been there, dropped a lot of money there myself.
And where?
I've been to that clinic.
Oh, okay, yeah, so you know the prices?
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your attention and time.
Thanks. Dr. Turner, then Susan Garlandhouse, and then Lisa Pavanis.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council members. My name is Dr. Richard Turner, and I'm trying to open a new emergency clinic in the area. Just to kind of go through some of the things that were said, we will never, ever be 24-hour. I don't want that. I have a different venue. I don't want to compete with the local vets, I want to support them. We will never have outside runs, we'll never have boarding, period. And when you say you have flexibility, that should be on your case basis, I would think, to put in there, hey, that's not allowed. They try to, I will never happen, period, never. And I would think if someone tried to do that, you guys can control that, but for me personally, guaranteed for me, man of my word, that will never happen, because I don't need it to happen. Stockton is very successful the way we are. We're the only emergency clinic of its kind where for emergency overnight, weekend, holiday care only, including exotics. We're here to support the local vets, not compete with them. Many patients are outpatient only. Say Fox tells when repairs, we take care of the babies, and they go home. They go home, they're out of there. I visit other clinics in there and have a form stating that we would like to show our support for the formation of All Creatures Emergency Clinic Folsom, which will provide quality, affordable care to all God's creatures, including exotics. 10 veterinary clinics sign that letter of support. They're waiting for me to open right now, they want to send to me right now, because we're offering an affordable overnight-only and weekend-holiday-only alternative for emergency care. I have a letter from Dr. Joz, who has the Bird and Pet Clinic in Roseville, and as she says, have an veterinary emergency clinic that can support not only dogs and cats, but also very efficiently help the exotics, will be so exciting. This will be the only emergency clinic in this area with this capability, and that's the truth. We will also accept wildlife for free, and I've also contacted the Sierra Wildlife Rescue Group, and Michael Dammer, who's the president of the board, is so excited to have this thing maybe happen, because we will take care of wildlife for free, hawks, owls, any little guys, for free, and then they have a group of volunteers that will do rehab after that. We'll also be available for animal-controlled animals. I hear now you have to take them to Roseville. We will be on call for that, for any animals you find on the weekend and at night. We already have the city of contract for the city of Loda and city of Stockton, and we provide quality care at a very affordable price, so we have their contracts. And also, we'd be available for your zoo. I actually, in my daytime practice, it was on Today Show, for doing a 600-pound white tiger root canal, and also, if you see the movie Evan Almighty with the Ark, or Rocket Vages with Tom Cruise, Katharine Jones, I'm the veterinarian for those baboons. So we have exotic experience, and we'd be available for your exotic in the zoo if you had trouble. We have a proven motto at All Creatures Stockton, going on for really almost five years now. We're involved the best emergency clinic the last two years, and this year it's running again. We're also located in Meadow Complex there. Costco's across the street. The part we're in used to be a complex for medical center for Kaiser, and we were actually, we took over the space that was a previous Kaiser Sleep Study Center. Right next to us is an optometrist, a back doctor, and a dentist, and they have proven letters, which you should have in your packet, that say, not only has there been no odor, but we've been good neighbors for the past six years, no odor, no odor problems, and not a negative impact at all on the medical complex. It has actually increased the value, they said, due to increased traffic and visibility in the areas. We've actually increased the value. This will also, we've done that in Stockton, we will provide extra security for the area, because we'll be open at night and on the weekends when everyone else is closed. 8:00 in the morning, we are closed, we're shut down. If you go by place in Stockton, 8:00 in the morning, all day, it's a ghost there, nothing goes on. We don't open until 6:00 o'clock at night, and then the morning. Only time we're open, daytime, is, say, weekends, we're open 6:00 Friday night till 8:00 Monday morning for weekend care or holiday, but all the time, time, we're closed. But again, we'll have probably five to six security cameras, that will be extra security, so when that place is dark, because I've been there at night on the weekends, and it's, nobody's there, at night, it's dark. We're going to have extra security, and we monitor the area for people, so we'll be helping out the medical complexes, other people in the area, because we're going to be watching out for them. So I respectfully grant a request that I be granted the needed opening of the All Creatures Emergency Clinic Folsom. It is time and important, people. No emergency care in right now is available in the Folsom and Sacramento as been stated for exotics, including rabbits, ferrets, reptiles, and pocket pets. UC Davis will not see anybody weekday and weekend after 9:00, and they know me there. They knew who I am. You mentioned Dr. Turner, and to Davis and the dean, I know who I am, and they know the quality of me, good. They've actually referred to me down. I've seen tortoises came in from paradise during the fire, all the way down to Stockton. We've seen rabbits from Bakersfield all the way up to Stockton, so we have the reputation. But there is a very niche in care for this clinic. Right now, as I'm speaking, exotic animals and other animals' lives are in danger, because I'm offering an affordable alternative. I'm there to save animals' lives, and I really feel it would be a great asset to your community. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dr. Turner. Susan Garlandhouse, and then Lisa, and then Lori Homan.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Susan Garlandhouse. I'm a veterinarian. I've been in practice since about 2003. I occupy a slightly different niche in the industry than my colleagues do, in that I work in what's called permanent relief. I only travel around to all kinds of different hospitals that need a couple shifts here, a couple shifts there. I tend to work about 80% ER, most of it overnight, some GP, I work for some nonprofits, little of everything. But because I work for so many different hospitals, and I cover pretty much all of Northern California, I tend to have a perspective that I see an awful lot of different hospitals. And you start to, you know, this is not my for goat roping, I've seen an awful lot of hospitals, and you start to get an idea pretty quickly of who runs a good shop and who doesn't. And the ones that don't run a good shop, I don't want to be associated with them. In the past year, I think I've worked maybe 10 shifts for Dr. Turner at his Stockton, and he runs a good ship. His place is quiet, it's clean, he has a competent and experienced, hard-working staff. I occasionally hear some comments that if a referral hospital doesn't have a boarded surgeon right there, if they don't have a boarded internist, if they don't have a boarded criticalist, then maybe you shouldn't be there at all, because somehow you're providing schlocky services. And that's just not true. And that logic is kind of like saying that, well, if you don't have a Maserati, then you don't belong on the roads. Now, I just came in from the parking lot, and I saw a lot of cars out there, but I didn't see a whole lot of Maseratis. But the good news, you know, I'm going to guess that most of us are going to get home tonight anyway. So, Dr. Turner, it's not the ivory towers. If somebody has a Maserati and they want to go to Davis...
We have one, it's missing, it's not in the parking lot tonight.
Okay.
Did you say that?
Then...
Sorry, Rodri, couldn't resist that one.
I don't blame you. If somebody wants to go to Davis and they can afford it, that's great, but this is something that would definitely fill a niche in Folsom. I've seen enough of Dr. Turner's facility, his Stockton facility, that I know he's not going to be a problem child. There's no noise, there's no odor. If you're standing outside there, you don't even know what's going on inside unless you see the sign. So I definitely support this proposal, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lisa, and then Lori.
Hi, my name is Lisa Pavanis, and I'm an owner and small breeder of French Bulldogs. In May of this year, one of my beloved Frenchy girls, who was pregnant with the seven puppies, suddenly went into labor on a Sunday afternoon, and I proceeded to call around to try to find a vet that could help her to do a C-section. And I was unsuccessful finding anyone in this area that could do one. So I called All Creatures in Stockton, because I had heard their name before, and was told to come on down. So I loaded her into the car with my daughter and drove the hour and a half. Hopefully, going to make it before she had the puppies. She proceeded to have one of them in Stockton. I had to pull over to the side of the road, but thank goodness, we made it to the clinic, and the rest were delivered by C-section successfully at the emergency clinic. And it was very stressful that I wasn't able to find anywhere locally that would do the surgery, you know, on closed hours, and I just really hope that this is opened, so that I will have a place in case of another emergency, where I can take my Frenchies if they need C-sections or any other care during off-hours.
Thank you, maybe for next year's hometown parade, you need to bring the dogs with you, where we had the running of the Bulldogs. It was super sweet.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, my name's Lori Homan. I'm an RVT for over 30 years. I do live here in Folsom. So I live and work in the area. I do now do equipment sales to veterinary hospitals, and so I have over 3,000 accounts up and down California and Nevada that I have to go to. I get to see lots of styles of care that are out there, and I can tell you, Dr. Turner's is one of the most caring, loving facilities around. And I did last Thanksgiving, and just thinking about it was breaking my heart. My Cyrus, he's a Great Dane, or was, on Thanksgiving, after hours, he torched his stomach, loaded out, and it twisted. I drove a half an hour to get to an emergency clinic, of which they could not help me. They didn't have anybody competent at that time, they tried to call in a surgeon, it was going to be over $8,000. They said, well, if you can't pay that, you got to put him to sleep. Breaks your heart. Really, really need somebody here. There's many of us that have all those stories. Dr. Turner does do exotics as well. That is a definite need around here. The Bird and Pet, I think, is the closest one around that does exotics. Sorry, still getting over Cyrus. He's got a very, very, very clean, very competent, professional staff, and that's huge. If you walk into a clinic and you don't feel that love that's coming from that front staff, it makes you just want to kind of go. Luckily, now I don't have to work in some of those clinics. I can actually, you know, get them an espresso and say, have a good day. But we do need something. His office, you were talking about cleanliness, it's always clean. I don't know if you walk into a certain hospitals and you go, whoa, wow, that's not a good smell. His is never like that. It's always a very pleasant, quiet, fear-free kind of location, and I definitely support him to be here.
All right, thanks, Lori. Okay, we have no other requests to speak, so I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions of staff? Any questions of staff? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll motion, or I'll move the item.
I am fully in support of Dr. Turner's facility, I have no issues with that. But we're not looking at this specific thing, you know, we're looking broadly here, and I do work in a business park, and sometimes I take my very spoiled dog with me to the office. But I'm not thinking about Dr. Turner's situation, I'm thinking about what other things could come before us. So would you be willing to add some sort of two conditions, that there be no outdoor space, and that there be no boarding? Because, in business professional, because if somebody wanted to open a veterinary clinic and offer those things, they could still do it in commercial, right? But I just, I'm just kind of thinking down the road, if somebody wants to open, you know, a veterinary clinic, hospital, in a business park, and, you know, it would be nine to five with boarding or outdoor thing, I mean, that would be disruptive to me and my business, where I've got clients coming in. So I would personally feel more comfortable if we put those two conditions on it. If you want to be in business professional, there's no outdoor use, or outdoor space, and there's no boarding.
I have no problem with that.
For point of clarification, you mean no boarding associated with it's non-medical, but there would be boarding if it was an emergency medical...
Right, if I go on vacation, I'm not boarding my dog there.
Okay, my question, how do you delineate?
If it's medically required, you know, the boarding that happens at most vets is because it's medically required, as opposed to that it's boarding because you went on vacation.
With council direction, we'll make sure the language is clear, and you'll have a second reading, and so you can see that language.
I can support that.
Okay.
I restate my second, then, with that friendly amendment.
Okay, so if there's no other...
Dr. Turner, before you come up, I'm going to quote former Mayor Miklos, who said, "Do you really want to talk yourself out of an approval?" That was said with all due respect. Ernie, go ahead.
When I looked at your application and read your name, I expected a commercial come right up, a TV show. Your name struck me just as coming right out of a TV show, Dr. Richard Turner. I like that name, I suppose, for a while, I think it'd be an asset to this town.
The only problem is, Ernie doesn't actually have any pets, so... You're barking at the wrong tree on that one. So if we have...
Love pets.
We have no other questions or comments, call the roll, please.
So this is on...
Ordnance.
So this is on the amended motion to introduce the ordinance...
Yes.
...as proposed with the provision that there would be no outdoor space and no non-medical boarding in the BP zone. So Councilmember Gaylord, do you accept the amendment to your motion?
I do accept that amendment to my motion.
Councilmember Kozlowski, still seconds?
Yes.
And we'll call the roll. Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Go forth and purchase that equipment, Dr. Turner.
We're happy to have you.
Welcome to the community. Let us know when the ribbon-cutting happens.
The monkey from Everland, monkey from Everland, baby, it's a baboon.
The other mayor, just to make sure we're clear, the council still needs to conduct second reading...
Yes.
And the ordinance will not go into effect for 30 days after the second reading.
Okay.
Yes.
And the second reading's on your next agenda.
Okay, all good. So with that, we will move to City Manager Report.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to recognize some young guests in our back row there with their intrepid coach, they're part of the Folsom Lego League, who I had the pleasure to meet with them, and about 98 of their closest friends, and they are working on robotic solutions to shaping cities, so I presume they're here tonight to learn a little bit more about how you do your work, so welcome to the girls and their coach.
And when you build a city hall out of Legos, let us know, we'd love to see it.
I'm being asked to have you girls come up, do you mind?
Can we poll them about whether they would have approved the vet clinic?
Well, it had a baboon mentioned, so...
Excuse me, the zoning code change.
You guys want to come up and say, can you say your, there's a little microphone right there in front of the podium, right here? Why don't you come up and just say your name, and how old you are, and what grade in school you're in? you're in? You guys can come up together.
Oh, come on, just come up together.
You don't have to separate. Speak nice and loud. There's a microphone.
I'm Charlotte Minor, and I'm 10 years old, and I go to Theater Judah Elementary.
Nice.
I'm Annabelle Lors. I'm 10 years old, and I go to Theater Judah Elementary School.
Well done.
Excellent.
Thanks for coming, ladies.
Yeah, thank you.
Guys, except, how do you get your Legos? Sorry. I know there was one of the projects over the Community Service Day was collection of Legos. So where do you guys get your Legos from?
Target.
Target, Amazon, your mom?
That's okay. How about this? I have, I unboxed two big boxes from my son's, like, barely-used Legos, and if you guys want them, I'd be happy to donate them to you. I mean, I'm talking a lot of sets of Legos.
There you go.
A ton. So we'll, I'll give you my email, and I'd love to donate them to you.
And he'll deliver them in his Maserati.
Yeah. And I went to Theater Judah also.
All right. Thank you, girls. Thank you, Coach. Our 16th Annual Community Service Day was a big success. I'm very pleased to share that we had over 3,000 volunteers, 80, sorry, 3,000 volunteers, 80 volunteer projects, and over 12,000 hours of service that were donated. We had 55,000 pounds of food collected at the Twin Lakes Food Bank, which is amazing. And that will serve the food bank for at least the next seven months, and I think they're still counting food. So thank you to the many community leaders and everyone up here, and all the department heads, and also the employees and volunteers who dedicated their Saturday to improving our community. Coming up on Saturday is one of my favorite events in Folsom. The Steve Miklos Aquatic Center will host its 17th Annual Dog Swim Event, the Bark and Splash. The entry fee is $10 per dog. Humans are free. So I don't have a dog, but I always attend, looking forward to that. And you can, it's from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 28th. Also this weekend is the Renaissance Fair and Jousting Tournament. This is the 27th annual event. It takes place in Folsom City Lions Park from 10:00 to 5:00 on Saturday and Sunday, and you can get tickets at folsomfair, fair with an I, dot com. And finally, the Folsom Fire Department is hosting their annual open house from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 5th at Station 35 at 535 Glenn Drive. So please attend. That's all.
Mike?
Okay, a couple of interesting things from Secog this past week. We had a presentation from Daniel Perelak, who's a professor at Cal, who studies urban planning, and specifically, his presentation was about form-based codes and the missing middle, basically duplexes and triplexes and quad-type units, smaller units on typical-sized residential lots rather than the sometimes source of consternation large apartment complexes. So that was timely, given what we're working on. So I think that's something we need to make sure we take a close look at. And then we had a, over the last couple of meetings there, we've had some discussions about the fact that the Trump administration's attempt to roll, or, excuse me, their rolling back of the air quality standards across the U.S. to the pre-Obama version of those, and the potential revocation of the waiver that California gets for setting its own may actually impact us in an unexpected way. Basically, the Sacramento region is on a schedule of when it has to update its transportation plans, and that's supposed to happen this coming year. And depending on which of the two standards are the one that we have to use, either the current California or the previous federal ones, or the current federal ones, will mean that that report and plan has to be done entirely differently. And depending on which one we choose to do, we may become not eligible for either federal funding or state funding. So there's a weird catch-22 that the Sacramento region may find itself in. So just heads up to everybody that that's an unintended consequence, or maybe an intended consequence of that action.
Based on some of the recent press I've seen, it, I think it's an intended consequence coming from the federal government.
Undoubtedly.
Yeah.
That is all. Thank you.
Roger?
Thank you. And we have an update with the Air Board on that topic on Thursday as well, so I'll probably have some more feedback for that.
Good.
A lot of stuff going on. Mostly, I just wanted to thank Folsom PDA. I had the opportunity to ride along yesterday for about five hours. Chief Officer Lamone, top-notch. I came in contact with three or four different officers during the whole time, and it's, folks don't understand how lucky we are to have the folks we have and the talent we have. The de-escalation of situations that I see in Folsom from minor to potentially not minor is just unreal. So just wanted to say thank you for that and show my respect for Officer Lamone, and he did really well. Thanks.
Ernie?
Well, this Friday, I start my chemo. I suppose you know I'm going to go through that. I expect to come out more handsome.
We think he had laughing gas today. We're not sure what's up.
And they say this particular chemo, you do not lose hair. I was hoping it might grow some. I don't have much to lose anyways.
I was going to go get you toupee or something, just for fun.
No, 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 no. I do have one of my wife's, his wife's wig if I have to. I may come compete with Roger, you know, just to be different. But I probably intend to fulfill my obligations in this job. If I can't, then yeah, I'll let you know, but I'm going to, I'm going to be here.
Counsel picked the wrong person to match up with. Just three quick things. Thank you to Christine and her team and everybody who worked so hard on Community Service Day and all the volunteers. As usual, I enjoyed that. I dragged Planning Commissioner Chair Justin Rathel with me to the Association of California Cities Aligned with Public Safety, one-day conference in Colinga. We toured a former prison that is now a marijuana manufacturing center, and we were talking about smells in the past thing. They'll never get that smell out of that if it ever goes to something else. But anyway, very interesting. Not sure that that's the right thing for Folsom, but very interesting. And then I will follow up with Mr. Farron, but this morning, I'm the first Senate District's representative on the Citizens Advisory Committee for Folsom State Prison and California State Prison Sacramento, and did ask Warden Rick Hill, who's the warden at Folsom State Prison, if he had been contacted or had any conversations with CDCR about the state identifying that property as a possible place for affordable housing, and he has had no conversations with them. The only way he knew about it is because he saw the article in the newspaper. So if that is ever to come to fruition, there would be a lot of things that would have to happen first.
That's good, if you care.
No, it's not, Ernie. I'm going to have to start the meetings, reminding everybody to turn their...
You should.
Do you miss me, Ernie?
Yeah. I could do.
Okay, so again, thanks to all the folks at the city that did all of that hard work organizing Community Service Day. It was a great event. Weather turned out great, a lot of great projects. Thanks to all of the major sponsors, Intel, Dignity Health, and the breakfast burritos were supplied by Soto Street Taqueria, and everyone enjoyed them, as I understand it, for a good part of the day. Looking forward to doing that again next year. Congratulations to Gekka Kansaki. I had the honor of attending their 30th anniversary. They joined us in Folsom in 1989. Company was founded in 1637, and the Folsom location was their first location out, well, in North America, basically outside of Japan. That was quite an honor, and it was a wonderful celebration. And the president of the company came. They're now in their 15th generation of ownership by the same family. So that's very, very cool. This week, well, last night, we had the RT board meeting. RT and Paratransit, Inc. are in the process of getting a divorce. So they will be separating, the timing of which will be interesting, and it, you know, as divorces go, it may or may not be contentious, so we'll see how that plays out. I don't know that that's going to have much of a direct effect in Folsom, as Paratransit is not a service provider in Folsom, and we're under Dalaride, which is already a service that's provided by RT. So hopefully, that won't affect us dramatically. RT is also rolling out free student passes for kids K through 12 in the city of Sacramento. And there's, we have ongoing discussions with RT about expanding the bus service in Folsom a bit to accommodate getting more schoolchildren to schools. We met with them last week and had a brief discussion about where a bus stop might be located along Blue Ravine for the kids at Folsom Middle School. So we'll keep you up to date as that moves forward. Had, also had a meeting of the Capitol Corridor Joint Powers Authority, which is the train that goes from Roseville down to Emeryville. Things are moving along with that. There's talk about double tracking to increase the frequency from basically the existing Sacramento Valley Station out to Roseville. There's been some, there's some changes that are going to take place with the service going from Emeryville into San Francisco, about where that's going to be located. And the nine-county Bay Area counties are looking at doing a sales tax measure to provide additional funding for Capitol Corridor and others. If you hear anything about that, Sacramento County and the city of Folsom, Plastra County, Sacramento area itself is not included in that sales tax effort. The furthest east that comes is Solano County. So if anybody hears anything about that, it doesn't apply to us, and I confirmed that at the meeting on Thursday. Haven't had a regional sand meeting in a month, so nothing going on there. And STA is continuing to move forward in evaluating the unfunded transportation needs in the region, and we'll see what the STA board decides to do about a measure of sales tax, and that decision will take place later this year. This coming weekend, Friday night, is the Hero of History Awards. I believe there may still be tickets available for that, if anybody's interested in attending. I don't think I'm telling any secrets by telling anybody that the recipient of that award this year will be our own Bill Anderson, longtime, I believe, founder and supporter of the feds, the Historic Railroad Group, and spent many, many, many years as a fixture in the city of Folsom at Christmas time impersonating Santa Claus. So I'm looking forward to that. I think there's a couple of other things going on this weekend, and I frankly can't recall what they are.
Well, I think you did forget that in about four hours and seven minutes, it's your birthday.
Oh, and I...
Happy early birthday, Mayor.
Thank you. And I did also want to thank Parks and Rec staff again for doing an amazingly good job at the golf tournament. It was a really, really fun event. I think everybody had a great time. And unbelievable congratulations and luck to Planning Commissioner Eileen Reynolds, who I believe won 80% of the raffle prizes. I think she had to borrow a truck to take her loot home, so. But everybody that I talked to had a great, great time. It was a great day. Thank you to former Mayor Andy Moran, who obviously selected the weather for Friday. Just another reminder, please drive carefully. There's already been a reference to issues this morning. All of the fatal accidents are all a bit more complicated than I think any of us wants to talk about publicly. Very unfortunate for those recent events, but everybody needs to slow down. Anybody read the paper earlier this week? Sacramento has the worst drivers in the state of California, and many of those people live right here in the 95630. So please, let's get us off number one on that list. The red light means you. Stop sign means you. Pretend your mother's behind you and that you're following your own kid who's driving. And if you see your neighbor's kids behaving badly behind the wheel or on the phone, call their parents. Call the non-emergency number if you see people driving erratically, and, you know, talk to your neighbors. If they're speeding past your house in the morning, tell them to cut it out. I can't tell you how many times I've done that with my neighbors and requested that they have their kids on skateboards, not flying down the middle of the cul-de-sac because they're going to get hit by a car, or they're going to hit a car. So please, just be sensible and be safe, and we are adjourned at 7:55.